Tim, because we're not going to cry like you.
Good evening. The Monday, August 10th, 2015 Common Council meeting is now in session. We could. Former Councilmember Charlotte Pfeifer will do the invocation.
Council President?
Yes. Twice in Council, President?
Twice.
Twice.
Thank you very much. Let us bow our heads or have a few moments of silence or contemplation. The Lord is known under many names: Yahweh, God, Jehovah, Great Spirit, Allah, All-Glorious, Bog of An. This is a secular meeting, so we also are going to respect those who are atheists, agnostic, and all those who are here this evening to support our great city and our dedicated leaders. We have many challenges in our nation and in our local area. We have senseless violence. We're trying to educate more with less. We have economic volatility. We have changing environmental and weather occurrences. And we are reshaping our family structures to meet a 21st century world. Yet, we will persevere because we have wisdom, education, experience, imagination, forgiveness, faith, and we have each other. We never know when we may lose a beloved family member or a valuable member of our community because tomorrow is not guaranteed for any of us. I encourage us all to ask the questions that need to be asked, give the information that needs to be given, and tell those you love that you love them today. And if you need to apologize, apologize today. Let us all come together as one community to do the work of the community for the community and leave it better than we found it for all of our children. Those who wish to may say amen, I agree, or indeed. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Boardy, read the roll, please.
Mr. Henry Davis. Mrs. Shea is excused. Dr. Furlik.
Yeah.
Dr. Varner.
Present.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Present.
Vice President Dieter.
Present.
Mr. Furlik.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
President Tim Scott.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you. Report on Subcommittee of Minutes, please.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the July 27th, 2015 meeting of the Council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Tim Scott, David Varner.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Special business. Before we start on the resolution, Chairperson White, you have an announcement regarding the budget, please?
Yes, the budget hearing that was scheduled for this coming Wednesday has been rescheduled to next Monday at 5:00.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Boardy, 1575, please.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana publicly congratulating John Michael Hankerson on winning the Indiana State Championship in track for the 100-meter dash and wishing him a great senior year as a star Washington High School student athlete.
President Scott, I'm going to ask, as a pleasure of the councilmen, if this could potentially be delayed until further to the council meeting. I just got a phone call. Those young men that were coming, they just got up a two-day practice.
Okay.
And they're hustling down here. Obviously, they're not here, but they're on their way. Heard my phone conversation with their coach. So asking can be suspended until another portion to the council meeting.
Unfinished business?
Make a motion to send this to unfinished business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Reports from the city, there are none at this time. We are represented by the administration by James Mueller. We will now entertain a motion to resolve the committee of the whole.
Did you identify James Mueller?
Could you identify?
Just peep him in. I don't. Which one is James?
I'm sorry, poor man. James? There you go.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to resolve in the committee of the whole.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay.
The committee of the whole is now called to order. This is the portion where the Common Council sits as a committee. The title of each proposed ordinance is read by the city clerk, followed by a report either from the chairperson of the committee or a report from area planning, if it's an area plan ordinance that will be before us. All other proposed ordinance, the formal presentation will be held by the petitioner, and that will be given immediately after the committee's chairperson's advisory recommendation. Following the formal presentation, council members may ask the person giving the formal presentation questions that pertains to the work that is before us in terms of the ordinance or the bill. We ask that everyone in the chamber, that you turn off your electronic devices to the silent mode so that people's business may be conducted without such distractions. At this time, I will ask city clerk John Boardy to give a second reading to Bill 29-15.
Public hearing on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code as amended by repealing and replacing Article 5 Planned Unit Development Districts.
Would like to obtain a motion to accept the substitute.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. At this time, is there a report from the ZNA Committee?
Yes, Madam Chair, the zoning accusations committee met this afternoon, and we bring this bill to the full council with a favorable report.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is there a report from area plan? We do ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, members of the council. Larry Maliazi, the Executive Director of the Area Plan Commission, offices on the 11th floor of the County City Building. This is a total replacement and the redrafting of the planned unit district. As you may know, we've had some structural issues with this particular section of the ordinance, and this is the result of our study and approach to it. What it does, it strengthens the intent section of the ordinance. This may sound like kind of a trivial little thing, but the intent section is a section where we, as a staff, can rely on to determine if a planned unit development petition actually is a legitimate petition and follows the balance of the ordinance. This has been a rather weaker section in the past and has caused us some issues. In addition, as we clarified this section, a developer attempting to zone their property to planning and development will have to, in writing, provide us a full explanation of how they intend to meet the intent of the planned unit district. It also strengthens the section that says that a planned unit development cannot be a replacement for a use permitted in any other district. And it also goes further specifying that it's not a replacement for a special use petition, nor does it allow to be used to replace the variance procedure that you have to apply through the Board of Zoning Appeals. We've removed the area requirement. We now are going to require that a developer provide a concept plan at least two weeks prior to submission of the official petition. This gives us time to sit down with the developer to ensure that this truly is a planned unit development petition. We've strengthened the requirements of the concept plan, the preliminary plan, and the secondary plan, made it much clearer of what is required, when it is required. And we've done some other structural changes with the ordinance itself and the development standards that they have to provide us. Beyond that, the process is exactly the same as a typical zoning petition that you see before you. The timeline doesn't change after that. And if you've got any more questions, I am glad to answer them for you.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
Negative.
Councilmember, excuse me.
Mr. Scott.
Tim Scott.
Larry, did you guys see some, I would say, people come and try to take advantage of the loophole? You guys are kind of closing that loophole on a special exception in that?
Absolutely.
Were there cases or examples that came before?
There are examples of PUDs that should have gone through the typical zoning procedure. And I can't really count them, but there's been over 30 PUDs in the city, about the same number in the county. And as we've gone through them, I'd say at least 50% could have or should have gone through the normal either variance procedure or the zoning procedure and not even been submitted as a planned unit development. So this will tighten those up.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council members? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We'll now ask the presenter to come before the council.
That was the phone.
Okay, great. Okay. At this point, we move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of substitute Bill 29-15? Anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing no one. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is not closed.
Move for favor recommendation.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor that we send substitute Bill 29-15 to the full council with a favorable recommendation, I hear you vote.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. I will now entertain a motion to rise.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Full council is now back in session. Mr. Boardy, would you give third reading to Bill 2915?
Third reading on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code as amended by repealing and replacing Article 5 Planned Unit Development Districts.
A motion to amend is in the committee of the whole.
It's moved.
Second.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Move for passage of amendment version. Mr. Boardy.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Furlik.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furlik.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
That would be eight ayes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. We'll move to resolution portion. This is portion of the Common Council meeting where the Common Council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk. A report from the committee person of the standing committee, which the bill was referred to for advisory review and recommendation, is then given. If the proposed resolution is requesting a zoning special exception, a report from the building department will be given, followed by the petitioner, who's given the formal presentation at the podium. If the proposed resolution is requesting a tax abatement, a report from city community investment department will be given by the following, by the petitioner, given the formal presentation at the podium. On all other proposed resolutions, the formal presentation by the petitioners will be given immediately after the committee chairman's report. Following the formal presentation, council members may ask preliminary questions only, and then other council comments being heard during the council portion. During the public portion, each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. Please give your name and address and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during the rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal of the bill. Mr. Boardy, would you please read the first resolution?
1576. A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating a certain area within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 810 North St. Peter Street, South Bend, Indiana 46617, as a residentially distressed area for purposes of a five-year residential real property tax abatement for Thomas and Lisa Lawren.
Mr. Z.
Good evening, council. Before you is a five-year, is a confirming resolution for a five-year residential.
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, proxy, Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. Before you is a confirming resolution for residential property at 810 St. Peters. The petitioner plans on investing $325,000 into the project in a construction of a new home. The new taxes created over the five-year period are $16,770. The estimated taxes abated over the five-year period are $1,893. The total taxes paid are $14,8887. The petitioner is here to answer any questions about the project, and I'm also here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. With this being a confirming, with the petitioner, please state your name and address in a brief summary.
Yes, good evening, President Scott, members of the council. I'm Tom Lockren. My wife Lisa and I reside at 52314 Tammy Drive in Granger, Indiana. The home that we are trying to build sits on one of four vacant lots in a cluster of about 16 vacant lots on St. Peters as part of the Notre Dame add new housing project.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions? Yeah, who's the developer, that owner developer of that land now? Is that Corman's land?
It is not. The University of Notre Dame owned that land, and we bought lots from them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. At this time, anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1576, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1576, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll turn back to council.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Boardy.
Dr. Furlik.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furlik.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. 1577, please.
A motion to hear 1577 and 1578 together?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
1577. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 402 North Sheridan Street, South Bend, Indiana 46619, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a two-year vacant building tax abatement for Manufacturing Technology, Inc. 1578. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 402 North Sheridan Street, South Bend, Indiana 46619, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Manufacturing Technology, Inc.
Thank you. Was there committee report?
Yes, Community Investment sends both these forward favorably.
Thank you. Mr. Fielding, name and address, please.
Good evening, council. Chris Fielding, Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. Before you in number 1577, you have a two-year vacant building property tax abatement, which would be an exemption to the local ordinance under the state code. The two-year abatement would be for the property at 402 North Sheridan that Manufacturing Technology Incorporated is proposing to purchase to expand their current operations here in South Bend. And as you can see the slide here, to be consistent with past recommendations, shows the current, the total revenue over a 10-year period and also the amount of public investment. The public investment does include the taxes being abated on the two-year. As they're not a phase-in, they were actually taxes that were available prior to the general fund. Included under 1578, you have a five-year personal property abatement. Their company is proposing to invest approximately $1.67 million, $1.75 million in new equipment to equip the building. Total taxes being paid of the five-year abatement would be $81,249. Total taxes being abated would be $68,759. And on the two-year property abatement, the total taxes to be paid, abated would be $90,080, and the total taxes to be paid would be $55,267. And Representative of Manufacturing Technologies is here, should you have any questions?
Sure. Sir, if you need, state your name and address in just a brief summary.
Sure, no problem. Doug Waite, Granger, Indiana. I'm the chief operating officer at Manufacturing Technology, and we are looking to purchase this building to expand our business. We also have a property on 1702 West Washington Street, so this building is quite close to our existing facility, and we're looking to move a current set of operations in that building out to this existing building and continue to expand our operations.
Excellent. Any questions from council? Okay, thank you. We'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1577, 1578, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of 1577, 1578, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council.
For adoption of 1577, second.
Calling the roll. Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furlik.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Furlik.
Aye.
And President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Move for adoption of 1578.
Second.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furlik.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Furlik.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes on both counts.
Thank you. May I make a, before he reads those, at 3615, 3715, 3815, 3915, go to area plan.
Second.
Do we need a first reading?
You need a first reading on that, don't we?
We need to have a first reading.
Oh, okay.
The motion will stand.
Yeah, yeah.
And I second that motion. Efficiency. Second all of those.
Okay, go, John.
3615. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 2906, 2910, and 2920 Mishawaka Avenue, South Bend, Indiana 46615, Councilmanic District 3, in the city of South Bend, Indiana. 3715. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 706 Eddie Street and 1111 Bissell, Councilmanic District Number 4, in the city of South Bend, Indiana. 3815. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at the 600 block of North Hickory Road and 3,500 block of East McKinley Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District Number 4, in the city of South Bend, Indiana. 3915. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 635 South Lafayette Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District Number 6, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Second the original motion.
Yes.
Yes. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now, under unfinished business, now that civics lesson is over, we'll move to 1575. Mr. Boardy, would you please read that?
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana publicly congratulating John Michael Hankerson on winning the Indiana State Championship in track for the 100-meter dash and wishing him a great senior year as a star Washington High School student athlete.
Thank you. Presenter.
One moment, please. Take your time. I won't do it to you. Councilmen, council colleagues, thank you so much for letting me bring this before you. I'm going to first open up by asking that Mr. Hankerson and his teammates along with his track coach and the staff of Washington High School to come, and any family members as well. Come on up, gentlemen, and family. Thank you so much. Whereas the Common Council recognizes that Washington High School, and I'm a liar, I say that proud, very proud, I'm a liar, under the guise of Principal Byron Sanders and Panthers track coach Larry Davidson have developed what the news media has called Washington Speedy Sprinters who stole the show and were spectacular in the sprints at the sectional track meet held in late May of this year. And whereas, one of the Washington track stars, John Michael Hankerson, stated, "It's all about hard work and determination." I was just trying to dig and finish and do what my coach tells me. After the Panthers' foursome of Anthony Brazier, young man, raise your hand, please. Do you know how it's crumbling? He's not here. Michael Hankerson and Mr. Rice. What's your first name? Tariq Rice finished first in 42.4 seconds, less than three tenths of a second away from the sectional record. The same relay team has also broke the regional record this past season in the 4x100 relay. Is that true? Okay. And with Coach Davidson noting that it's a blessing that we can run fast and we have some depth, I believe if we can get everybody healthy, we could win state and set the state record. And whereas, on Friday, June 5, 2015, the 2014-2015 IHS AA Boys Track and Field State Tournament was held at Robert C. Hall Track and Field Complex on the Bloomington campus of Indiana University before a crowd of 1,000 enthusiastic fans and family members. And whereas, the Common Council is proud to recognize that John Michael Hankerson won the 100-meter dash with what has been called a laser time of 10.73. That is fast. It's very fast. And is now the Indiana State Champion for this event. Now, therefore, let it be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section 1. On behalf of the residents of the City of South Bend, Indiana, the Common Council is proud to recognize John Michael Hankerson and publicly commend him for his hard work, dedication, and determination for winning the 100-meter dash in the IHS AA State Tournament and representing the Washington High School Panthers and being another great example of a student athlete excellence in the city of South Bend, Indiana. Section 2. Washington High School football coach Jay Johnson has called John Hankerson a real leader who impacts games both on defense and on special teams. He has developed into a dynamic player who has caught the eye of many colleges throughout the nation. The Common Council wishes this special student athlete all the best throughout his upcoming senior year, both in the classroom, where he holds a 2.9 GPA, and on the athletic fields, and knows that his hard work and talents and determination will result in a great college experience. Section 3. The resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approval by the mayor. Thank you, council. I'm going to allow right now the pastor, I mean, yeah, pastor and Coach Davidson to have some words, as well as pastor and coach. Well, that's going the same. Thank you.
Name and address, sir.
My name is Larry Davidson, 25261 Grant Road here in South Bend, Indiana. I'm both pastor and coach at Washington High School for the boys' track team. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Henry Davis, as well as the entire city council for this recognition. We really appreciate you doing this for our young men. I want to say again, congratulations to John Hankerson for a tremendous job at state, as well as the 4x1 relay team. They had, we had an excellent season this year. We started off We started off by winning indoor state in the four-by-two relay. We actually won that, which is the first time that Washington High School ever did that before. And then had a tremendous year of sprinting, both in the 100, 200, four-by-one, even took the long jump to state where Tony Brazer's here. Did a tremendous job. And the good thing that I like about it is all of these guys are coming back. We got one more year. We had a young man to get injured who is Witherspoon here, Dion. And believe it or not, he's just as fast as John, but he just, he got injured. And so we actually expecting to be faster than we were last year. And we also end up not only winning the regional championship in the four-by-one, but we set the regional record. And so again, we appreciate you recognizing us and we appreciate these gentlemen. And they're not only doing a good job on the track, but they're doing a really good job on the football field. And they're doing a good job in the classroom as well. And colleges, colleges are already after these gentlemen. And so you'll see all four of them. There's one that's not here. He graduated already. He's already at college, which is Denatas Cromly. And so these gentlemen have done a tremendous job and we look forward to them doing a good job this upcoming year. Please pray for us and we looking forward to an exciting year, this upcoming year as well. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. I am Keith Witherspoon, pastor of Bethlehem Baptist Church, also a coach at Washington High School. Anytime you put two Baptist preachers together, it might get long, so I'll just say everything he said I agree with.
Mr. Davis, is that your presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, council members, would you like to ask a question or a comment?
No, just want to say to Councilmember Davis, thank you for bringing forth this resolution to the coaches and the students. And you've done an excellent job. We're very proud of you. We're proud of you and the work that you've done on the field, but most importantly, the work that you've done in the classroom. And the two words that I heard John indicated in the comments that were read by Councilman Henry Davis, hard work and determination. So if you keep those two powerful words in your minds and in your heart, you go far. So congratulations for a job well done.
Congratulations on your success, especially your success in the classroom. That's great.
Here, Dieter. Thank you. Coach Davidson and the men, sincere congratulations from everything you do. The most important thing that I see here that sticks out is the grade point averages. Okay, you guys can be as fast as you are and not have the grades and not have the ability, like Coach said, to be going on to college. You guys will be going on to college because you've done it in the classroom. So you can thank your coaches, your ministers, your parents, anybody else that's been an influence on your life, because Brazer, I haven't seen you since you were just a little dude. So again, that's great accomplishments. I hope that that turns over to the football field, because I know there's four young men in Bowling Green will be watching you guys, be watching your grades and make sure that you follow in their footsteps in some capacity. Doesn't have to be Bowling Green, but anyplace else you decide to go will be great. So you have fantastic role models with your coaching staff. I know a lot of your parents, so keep up the good work and we'll be seeing you in the highlights coming up. So have a great season of football. Hopefully you'll get down to the state championship.
Pastor Davidson, Pastor Witherspoon, men of Washington, it's an honor to recognize you all tonight because you are well-rounded men and you are exceeding in a variety of areas. And you are aiming your arrows high and you are reaching for the sky, and I want you to continue to do that and make us proud. Thank you.
The lessons of determination are hard work. Sometimes people pick them up early, sometimes they pick them up later. You young men have picked them up early. Keep them with yourself forever. They will, they will lead you to good places and things. So congratulations. Doug?
Congratulations on both your academic and athletic achievements. I'm envious that you can do both.
And for myself, I agree with everything that's been set up here. There's one other thing I know on this council, there have been, back in our day, some very good athletes on this council. One thing that I took away years later, I didn't realize it when I was your age, was there are kids in your grade, there are kids younger than you, there are kids in elementary and junior high that are watching you and paying attention. And I actually didn't realize that until a couple Christmases ago. I went back and met a younger gentleman who was following me when I was an athlete. So think about that. You are setting a great example and we are very proud of what you've done. And remember that. Other people are watching and following your footsteps. So thank you so much. Now, this time, we'll open up to the public. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak in favor of 1575? Please come to the podium.
My name is Samuel Brown, I live at 222 East Nubal Street in the city of South Bend. On behalf of Citizens United for Better Government, I'd like to thank these young men on outstanding job. And I'd like to say this to you guys. You really cannot understand what you've done yet, but one day as you go on in life, part of the time will rob you of some of that beautiful spirit and you'll be walking through branches or you're younger, people under you, and it pictures up on that wall and then you understand how important it is to live. Because when I was coming out, I really couldn't understand that I was so proud that I looked at you guys in the classroom and also in the classroom. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box 2, 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I just want to say that this is a prime example of what we want to see in our youth and what we should be recognizing here. And these gentlemen behind us obviously strived with that 2.0 grade average and rose above that.
Yeah.
So you are a prime example of something other youths are watching you. So we appreciate everything you folks do.
Okay, thank you. Want to speak in favor? Just come on up to the podium.
Carl Hubbard, 1922 P. My Way. I'm the girls' track coach at Washington. I just wanted to congratulate these young men because I'm still, I don't know what Mr. Brown is talking about, I'm 51, I'm still trying to outrun them. Hey, congratulations. These guys worked hard. Really, I mean, I'm seeing them every day. And these guys, not only in the classroom, but out here on the track field. But as I, my words to them is mentor the young athletes that are out here. Because this is a dream that a lot of athletes have that they never get to achieve, and you guys have achieved a high goal target. So you won't recognize that until you get about my age, you know? But still at my age, I'm still outrunning half of them. I don't, I don't.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Anthony Brazer, senior. I live at 1517 Anderson. I just want to take time out to thank these young men. When I first, this is my son. When I first heard about my son, I heard about him at work. And one of the guys said, "You know your son running track?" Well, he didn't tell me that. I got this chance to see him and the rest of the guys take off, and I was like, man, our memories been that fast? We was little. But the one thing I want to tell these guys is always respect yourself, because respect goes a long way. And as the young man says, somebody's always watching you. As long as you care to respect for yourself, they'll respect you right back. Congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 1575? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone daring to speak against 1579? Please come to the podium.
No, I'm not going to do that.
Rebuttal?
Not that either, as well. Pastor Davidson wanted to acknowledge. One thing that I did forget to do, and that is to thank Dr. Furlik. One of my young men was injured early in the year. And I knew that in order to get him back the fastest way is to, is to get a specialist. And I knew about his work. And I just happened to see him out working. And I stopped and talked with him. He gave me a referral. And I want to say that the doctor you referred for him did an excellent job. And again, I want to publicly thank you.
Thank you.
For that. God bless you.
Thank you. Prove of affirmation? Second. All in favor? Aye, aye. All opposed? Oh, come on up.
I was the athlete that he was talking about. I just want to thank you personally, Dr. Furlik, for referring me. Oh, thank you for the referral.
You didn't order him, he wasn't your different.
Can I have that struck from the record?
But I just want to thank you, sir, for referring me to him. He really got my leg right and I was able to run with my teammates down the state. Thank you.
Thank you. New business? We're all, get ready. Yes, we got a doctor. Come on.
My leg's ready now. Hop, they say.
How are you catching bases?
How's it going? Everybody's doing well?
Great job. Appreciate that.
God bless you. God bless you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Take that picture, Hannah. Did you get this, or did you give me that picture? All right, you guys doing well? Oh, you sure.
Don't argue with him about that.
Karen. Can I get you some of the facts, Tom?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you want to stay?
We're in the picture, huh? Sorry. Stay right here. Money. Cheese.
Say, Washington High School. Save.
Good luck, man. Let's go. This is done, let's go. Those are the floor. That's right. Raider, we'll break them in a long time. We'll move to new business. Any new business?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I would like to announce that Councilman Henry Davis will be replacing me on the Baycock Michigan Board. And so effective immediately, the meeting, first meeting Wednesday, I'll send you in the notes. Thank you.
Very, thank you. Henry Davis.
Thank you.
I would also like to deny the fact, no. Really quick, I've been noticing, and I've been noticing for a while, I don't know what the pleasure of the council would be on this issue, but there has been a lot of shootings, a lot of shootings, a lot of stabbings, a lot of stabbings. I don't know what the stats say about South Bend being safer or more violent, but what I do know is that there's been a lot of shootings and a lot of stabbings. I'm going to ask the Health and Public Safety Chair, next council meeting, if possible, so we can find out what are solutions to this, I don't know if it's an upswing crime or what. I know this past Friday, there was a brawl of some sort with a lot of teenagers that were attending the beach party on the San Joe River. As that is just like a one-time event, there are other things that, you know, happens during the course of the day during the week that I am well aware of. And to me, it just doesn't sound good. It doesn't sound safe. I think there was another issue with a local business developer ended up in a situation that was less than desirable for himself. So you have these issues, you know, and we're all aware of them. If you're not, you know, I could feel you later on, but.
I'm aware of them.
We have.
Would you like, we have to invite Chief Teachman to?
Whatever we can do, but it's a very violent atmosphere out there. And I don't want anybody to talk about how violence is down in South Bend, because I would tell you that it's not true. I'm not interested in talking about stats neither. I'm interested in finding out what solutions could be put in place to slow this, because it's not looking good.
We can do that. Chair of Health and Public Safety, you'll take that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for new business?
Yeah, just another, I've been advised that W-NIT is again showing a different council meeting than we are, what we're doing right now.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll take that up.
What are they doing?
They're off sync on the council meetings that they're broadcasting.
It doesn't come from, it's W-NIT. It's twice they've shown, instead of what's going on.
So I'll ask Evan Furlik of IT Committee if he can look into the issues and see if we can get a resolution.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Anything else under new business? Seeing none, we'll open up to privilege of the floor. This is the portion of the council, common council meeting where citizens can come and speak to the council. Please direct all your comments to the council. The council will not remark or return any questions. If you need any information from us, there is a form on the podium that you can fill out and submit your request for information. You have three minutes and Derek Dieter, Vice President, will time you and give you a one-minute or 30-minute exit warning. And at the time, state your name and address and we'll begin.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. As far as crime and what's going on in our city, that's kind of what both my privileges of the floors are. As usual, I brought you plenty of documentation, photographs, a couple web addresses. I think one problem we need to look into as far as the crime is a statement that was made by our Chief of Police in November of last year, 2014, to a news media outlet in Illinois where he was concerned about the tensions between the police and the community. And he said one way he was going to solve that was by trying a new approach, which meant less arrests. If you've got a crime being committed, obviously there needs to be an arrest made regardless of tensions. In this packet, you'll find two instances in the past week. One car that was stolen. There was photographs taken of the car at a property on Randolph Street. Very clear photos of the perpetrators in the car, video of them driving the car away. Two days later, the same residence on Randolph Street, another vehicle appears, it looks out, the lady takes some pictures. When they're leaving the residence, they hit her car and damaged her car, hit and run. Today, she chases this vehicle on her own. When she sees it on the streets, the police come out. No arrests in any one of these cases. The young lady, single mother, that's car was stolen, took her three, four, five days before she could ever talk to anyone. So we either have a lack of officers, which I don't think is the case. Statistics show that we actually have a few more officers per capita than cities our size. So obviously, there is a lack of division assignment or management in the police department. That needs to be looked into. Lot of information you want to look at. As far as Sights Park, we've had a lot of problems down there. I'm not afraid to say it. Dave Matthews, the big developer who built all those fancy condos, was jumped, robbed, they stole his phone, whatever the case was, beat up, roughed up. A couple weeks ago, Monday, for some reason, never appeared in the news. That would have been big news if the media heard about it. I'm kind of curious if y'all can find out, was it in the bulletin that was given to the media where they go in in the daytime and say what crimes were committed today? Or was it withheld? If it was withheld, who withheld it? Was it the Chief of Police? Was it the administration or?
Thirty seconds.
The public has a right to know. When you build lights there and say, "Come look at the pretty lights after dark," we have a right to know what's lurking in the darkness there that you're attracting us to. And we were kept in the dark by someone. So I'll turn these in to you and you can do what you want.
Thank you. Next name and address, please.
My name is Samuel Brown. I live at 222 East Nubal Street in the city of South Bend. I represent our group called Citizens United for Better Government. A second with just he said, but you better, I'm going to take my three names and thank the council. I was very humble for some of the council members put me in a position to serve. And when you are put in that position like I was given and you took an oath in front of my family and God, I was very humble. And you better be one thing, I'm going to work very hard. We got a school board that's in disarray, they're not doing what we, the parents, want. We elected them to serve us and look after their kids, the most precious product you can give them. They have decided they're looking other way, and it's not going to go unnoticed, because we're going to vote them out, starting from the top to the bottom, because they've got a precious product in their hand, and they taking it too lightly. Education is the most highly thing that you can have. It ain't about sports. It's about when you move on in life, taking care of your family, 33 and a half years in the cold and rain and sweat. I done that.
Thank you. Next name and address.
John Schaefer, Chicago Michigan 5 for the homeless, 347 West Luscher Avenue, Elkhart, Indiana. I wanted to address the situation of the homelessness in South Bend. 2006, the South Bend Tribune reported that there was approximately 100 unsheltered homeless, and in 2010, it doubled to 2009. In 2011, it was slightly dropped to 200 unsheltered homeless. The Hope Rescue Mission was established 60 years ago, and then came the Center for the Homeless, which was bigger and became a widely recognized model for the shelters across the country, and has been around for 26 years. Hope Ministries, formerly Hope Rescue Mission, holds 35 men, 16 women, and 18 families with children. The center, as it is widely known, holds more than 275 beds, of which 60 of those beds are for children. That's about 100, that's about 215 beds for adults every night, according to their website. Lately, the Center for the Homeless, the Hope Ministries, have been full on a daily basis. That leaves a lot of our homeless on the streets, especially in light of the South, the Salvation Army rehab facility closing back in June. I'm here to advocate that the city of South Bend needs another homeless shelter, or we need to address more seriously the problem of the homeless in South Bend. Lately, it's become a nightmare for our city police, dealing with drunks and homeless in alleys and in front of businesses. And whatever it takes, we want to ask that the city begin to address the situation of homelessness for our businesses, for the homeless themselves, so that we do not find them sleeping on streets and alleys and abandoned buildings and other bridges, which is where we find many of them, as an organization of what we do. We would ask that for the welfare of our homeless, that we create more beds in this city, giving them a humane and safe place to sleep at night. Last week, I found a gentleman sleeping underneath a bridge, and it was horrible conditions. He tried to get into the Center for the Homeless, and he was told the same thing I'm told almost every day.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Thank you. That they're full. And because of a staff reduction of three personnel, the Center for the Homeless has recently adjusted their bed count to reflect the loss of staff of three members. Hopefully, they will get that back up to where they'll be fully staffed.
Ten seconds.
And open more beds. And we just hope that the city takes a look at this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next name and address, please.
Latoria Green, 1028 Ebeling Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46615. Good evening, council members. I come before you on behalf of Smoke Free St. Joe to publicly congratulate the South Bend Community School Corporation on the passing and implementation of a comprehensive tobacco-free policy prohibiting all tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, for students, staff, parents, and visitors. This policy will be implemented for the 2015-2016 school year, just in time. Smoke Free St. Joe hopes that the South Bend Common Council will formally congratulate the South Bend Community School Corporation by resolution of recognition for protecting the health of students and the community of South Bend. Please feel free to contact Smoke Free St. Joe at 574-335-3896 if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name and address, please.
Barbara Jewell, 821 Gartner Avenue, South Bend. I want to reiterate what Jesse Davis said, and that is about Sykes Park. I took my granddaughter down there shortly after the lights were implemented, and I have to tell you, I was shocked. We waited until it was dark, of course, and when I went down there, I thought, oh my gosh. I didn't feel safe with her there, and I usually feel safe out in the dark. However, it looked like drug deals were taking place. I wanted to shield her, because it looked like people needed to get a room, if you understand what I'm talking about, I'm sure you do. And I just felt danger, danger around us. I didn't stay down there very long with her, she's rather young, and I just felt that I was really glad I had my dog with us. And unfortunately, I've told people, the lights are beautiful, however, I wouldn't suggest going down there, it's just too dangerous. I would really like to see some type of security, which unfortunately, it's, you know, it's another burden to the city, but I really think something needs to be done, because it's, it's dangerous down there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next name and address, please.
Dave Wilson, 1109 21st Street. I don't know how many people seen the news tonight, but apparently, this gentleman had been in prison for two years and is out of prison now, and his address is Ironwood Bridge. How in the hell can somebody have an address, Ironwood Bridge? I've got to have an address. And he molested a five-year-old kid in the area where he's at right now, and there's several, several, several young kids around that area. I hope that the police got their eyes open.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Please step to the podium now. Seeing none.
Bush, third down. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Hey, hurry up. Really? That's, that's terrible. I didn't know that.
It is terrible. It's awful. And I cannot wait to try these late.
Oh, I know. I wonder if they.
Why they don't patrol? How do I get paid for that?
Well, there's certain, you just seem to find.
I think I got it.
It's almost like wherever they got to go to have fun, however.
No, you have fines.
It's like you have a sink.
Yeah.
My granddaughter's.
Right there in the passport.
And it's obvious.
That's on my phone.
Wonder why they, why they don't patrol it?
I don't know. I didn't see it. Maybe they do at times, but.
No, no, they need to have a guy walking up there and say, "Hey, get the hell out of my cars." I mean, come on.
Well, and you know, and that's right, or Dave Matthews.
Was he not?
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
Jesse said he didn't, it wasn't. I know about it.
What do you mean, you got him on?
He was attacked, and he stole his wallet.
You know, weird.
You know who, no, I don't think so.
No, I appreciate it. No, I.
It isn't.
No, it was from the B and B, and the one officer I talked to said they locked them in, and they're all in succession, it's easy to plug.
The one that met us told, you know, it didn't go through, so somehow they.
I don't understand that, because it shouldn't be all.
Okay.
I'm.
I don't understand that.
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 I'm.